And I'm joined by.
Hi, thank you for having me. I don't know why this is.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
She's hearing it. How is that? Okay.
Try it now.
Try it now.
Can she hear us?
Can you hear us now, Martha? Yes.
Okay. Hi. We're good. Again, I'm Kristen Trolleo. I'm the grand structure with Cleveland Metro Parks.
Thank you, Kristen. Cleveland Metro Parks and Hinkley Township have a long history of working together and a long history of Cleveland Metro Parks operating Hinkley Reservation. We are actually coming up on 100 years with the Hinkley Dam and Hinkley Lake. So we are here before you tonight asking for support. We have looked at several funding opportunities. The one that we are looking for now is some congressional funds through the process that they've established. A little bit about the project itself, and I know that we have people looking from the audience.
I can zoom in on that.
Can you?
Want to prop that? Yeah.
Yeah. I'll prop it. And then where can I do it so it doesn't block? Look at that. Okay. Yeah, that is, oh, oh, wow. Okay, very good. I'm glad I trimmed my nails this morning. Hinkley Lake itself is an approximately 87 acre lake impounded on the east branch of the Rocky River. Like I said, the dam is approaching 100 years old. The dam consists of an earthen embankment and then 150 foot wide concrete spillway. And it's time for rehabilitation. The dam itself is a class one dam, registered dam, so that what that means is it's a high hazard dam. If the dam were to fail, that means that downstream, there would be potential loss of life and property. So we, as the owner of the dam, take that responsibility very seriously and need to make sure that we rehabilitate this dam to modern standards. A lot has changed in 100 years. We see different types of storm. We see hurricane remnants that sometimes come and park over northeast Ohio. And we need to make sure that our infrastructure can handle those type of extreme events. So with that, we've gone through a very extensive planning process. We have one of the best engineers in the industry, Michael Baker International, who's our engineer of record on this project. We have Great Lakes Construction Company also located here in Hinkley Township as our construction manager, who will be doing the construction of the project. And our goal is to start construction at the end of 2023. Drain the lake. It will take some time for the lake to drain. And then once, once we drain the lake, we will start work on the dam. But we're also going to be removing sediment at the south end of the lake down here, where we've seen some, some pretty hefty sediment deposits. Over the past few weeks, we've temporarily drawn down the lake four feet to see what would, what we would encounter. And we weren't surprised, but we know we have our work cut out for us because that south end of the lake has really seen a lot of deposits settle over the years. So while we have it drained, we're going to take care of that issue as best we can. So with that, we're looking at an eight to nine million dollar project. We have, and Kristen's been working for years, for years on this. Yes, go ahead.
That's okay. So as Sean said, it's about an eight to nine million dollar project. And we have been looking at external funding sources to help offset some of the costs that would otherwise be coming out of Cleveland Metro Parks capital budget. So we have applied several times to the state through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources dam program. Unfortunately, it wasn't the right fit with them only funding planning and us looking for construction funds. And so now we are trying again through the federal appropriations process. So every March, the federal government opens up their appropriation process through both the House and the Senate. And you can apply for projects that fit into one or several of the buckets. And we are going to apply through both Senator Sherrod Brown's office and Congressman Max Miller's office for some funds to help offset the construction costs. So we will be asking for probably six million maybe from it. So our request to the township is, was a letter of support for our application. So letters of support are required by the appropriations process to be submitted with your application. So we have one letter of support from the dam safety program at Ohio Department of Natural Resources that supports the project. And one from the Rocky River Watershed Council, who also supports the project. So I did send a draft letter to your trustee Melissa Augustine to see if we could get a letter signed from the trustees in support of the project being located within your township. Yeah. So the request is to support our application to the federal government and asking for funds to fix the dam. And so.
Are you looking for just entities like government and organizations? Or would this be something that, I don't know if the board would agree to this, but if we posted something on our website that residents can write letters of support as well, since Hinkley Lake is frequented by hundreds of Hinkley residents daily?
I don't see that that would be a problem, although the federal appropriations process, it's a very quick turnaround time. And the one is due tomorrow and the other ones due Sunday. And so they don't give you much time once they actually open.
Our web, our web ministry is on vacation, so never mind.
Well, so I mean, and that, that they do not, they give you about 14 days from when they open up the process until when they're due. And it's just kind of the nature of how this one works.
Okay.
But I think in the future, if we need more, or if we seek another funding source, that could be great.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Plus, I think if folks are so inclined, you can always reach out to the representatives. They all have their emails posted.
Oh, sure.
And send directly to them.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So, yeah, again, it is a quick turnaround time for this particular source, which is not surprising because it has been the last few years as well. So that would be a great gesture for a future application. Maybe we won't need it, though. Maybe we'll get funded through this one and we won't need any more future applications.
Fingers crossed.
Right? So, yeah, so that's the request before you is to support our application through the, the federal appropriations process.
Did you want to include anything in here about the condition, the current condition of the van and the, and the safety issues? Or no? Does that play into the process?
We've made those.
It does. I mean, there's, so there's a whole.
That's in the application?
Yes, there's a whole application process. So, you know, you know, there's questions that are asked about, you know, your project readiness, the need for the project, the effect of the project on the communities. Obviously, your budget, and then the letters of support are, are requirements through the process, so.
Any questions?
Sure.
Could have got you your own microphone.
Hand you a mic. How about that?
Richard Pearl King Road. Sean, you and I had a long conversation August 1st, 2018.
Oh, wow.
About this project. I have, well, I have notes.
Good memory.
And obviously, the dam will not hold up to 100 year most probable storm. And that's the main reason for doing it. It can't be recertified, correct?
Correct. So we go through a inspection process with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources dam safety program. And with modern engineering and modern analysis of storms, the PMF probable maximum flood would overtop the embankment. And that would be a situation that we want to avoid. That's why we are raising the embankment.
Talk about the dredging and where the dredgings are going to go to illuminate the trustees.
Great, great question. So we have become, I would say, pretty well versed at working on maritime projects and especially inland marine and inland lake projects. So what we've done, we've actually started this at Garfield Pond in Garfield Heights, is we know that the best way to line a pond, to line a lake bottom, or to line a dam in this case, is with native virgin clay. So we actually did some geotechnical evaluation in and around Hinkley Reservation. We looked around the ledges, the, the ledge lake area, and then also Judges Lake. And we then looked at Buzzard's Roost and determined that the geological setting at Buzzard's Roost in the back corner is the best. So we're actually going to be harvesting clay from Buzzard's Roost, using that to build up the dam so it's fully impermeable. And then we will then have created a borrow pit. And the dredge that is produced from the lake operations, from dredging, will then be brought to fill in that borrow, that borrow pit at Buzzard's Roost, which we think is a rather unique approach and very economical, considering how much dam projects usually cost. This one is relatively cheap. Oh, great question. I think we were in the 15,000 yard area. I mean, it's, it's, well, that's a lot, still a lot. Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah, yes. So we're, we're in that.
Going to be, I assume, road dogs and nobody can get that there.
Not only that, we, we will have a safety plan in place for the lake itself. Because we really want to make sure that people don't try and walk across the lake once drained. Because that silt is, it's deep and it is very hard to navigate, put it that way.
My husband is a police officer and I know they have had to go, they've had calls from people that, oh, they're like, I'm fishing and I'm trapped.
Yes, yeah, and it's.
You have to rescue them because it's like quicksand, so.
It's scary.
Yeah. I don't know how they remain calm. I'm trapped.
Yeah.
This is from Matt.
So. If I may again.
Yes.
I'm greatly relieved that you're going to get the soil, the clay from, by the Buzzard's Roost and not from Judges Lake or Ledges Lake. Because then you would, if you were doing those two, you would have to go over township roads.
Yes.
That was the way we, you and I discussed it over four years ago.
Correct.
So I'm great, that's great. You're going to take it from there and not use our township roads.
If we, well, I, I want to make sure, because I know we're on record here. If we do go on road for any portion of that, and we're likely to stay mostly in the park, we will make sure that we are using rated on-road trucks and not off-road trucks. So which, the calculus is we want to use as big a truck as possible because it reduces the amount of trips. So the, the finite detail hasn't been worked out, but what we can say is we've really reduced the route length. So whether or not we use state for a portion of it or not.
Well, that's great to hear that. You did your homework.
Yes, yes.
The other, so tell me about the dredging process. Is it going to be wet dredging or dry dredging?
The other thing we've learned over time, having done this now a few times, is that dredging in the dry is the absolute way to go. So one of the reasons we have such a long timeframe for this project is we anticipate starting to drain the lake in September 18th of 2023 and letting it decant or de-water as long as possible. Because even though it may look dry, the crust forms on top and you still have soup underneath for the first few months. So we really want the opportunity to let the lake dry itself out. So we are going to be doing it in the dry. It'll still be an absolute muddy mess. But we are not going to use liquid or mechanical dredging operations.
Again, I'm glad to hear you're going to do it dry and not wet.
Yes.
And obviously, you're going to have to rebuild the swimming area below the dam. That'll be completely destroyed, I would imagine.
It'll be partially impacted because of the work we have to do on the dam. So we have 150 foot long spillway. And one of the things we found is in that PMF probable maximum flood, the spillway could rotate a bit. So we're actually going to be pouring a rather large mass of concrete to resist those turning moments or turning movements. So the, the portion of the spillway closest to the dam will absolutely be impacted. We are looking at putting a new low head dam at the, the downstream end of the spillway, just so it's new and fresh and.
Replacing the existing low, low head dam.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Again, we're still working out the, that's a very small component of the project.
Sure. And you said a very large amount of concrete. I'm assuming you're not going to use concrete trucks half full. You're going to use concrete trucks that are full to the maximum for the roads, wherever you're getting the concrete.
We will either do that, or we could, we have been talking about actually doing a batch plant. So we will see. So the good thing is, you know, we're working with Great Lakes. They did, they're one of the best in the business. Again, housed here in Hinkley Township, so.
And so if you did use trucks, how many trucks would that mean going over our roads?
Good question. Most of it would be state route, other than Bellis, which I could get you that answer, but I don't know off the cuff right now.
That's a lot of heavy trucks that we don't normally see.
It's a lot of trucks. Yes, it is. Yes. So I can give you the answer. I mean, give me a little bit of time, but in working with Great Lakes.
I'm just trying to illuminate the, illuminate this project for the trustees.
Absolutely.
Before they sign this letter.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
I think those are my only questions. I think, I think you've come a long way in the last four and a half years since I talked to you.
We have, and in working with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and the multiple reviews that we've had from them on the plans, it's a, it's a very well scrubbed project, like we're this close.
So two years ago, there was a scheduled burn over in the Buzzard's Roost. And there was another scheduled burn this fall. Is that in any way related to what you're doing?
No. No, that is strictly a natural resource management tool and not related to what we plan to do in the back corner.
I may have asked you this before, but is there any requirement to mitigate any of the fertilizer runoff? It seems to work its way into every decent pond in Hinkley and kill everything inside it and turn the water green. I don't know if that's been an issue here. I might have asked you this about, or something like that. I can't remember what your answer was, but is that a concern at all? And is there any plan that's a problem to mitigate it? How would you mitigate something like that?
So one thing, well, several things that we've done is we've, we've tested the silt material at, at Hinkley. We, we typically have to do that to characterize it and it is generally clean. So we haven't seen a lot of phosphorus deposits or things of that nature. Hinkley Lake is large enough and has enough circulation from the east branch of the Rocky River and Johnson's Creek that we don't see a lot of the eutrophication that occurs in those smaller inline ponds. So it's, I don't want to say isn't a concern. It's a little less of a concern. But as a Rocky River watershed partner, you know, it's something that we always are thinking about. We are, what, a four-time recipient of the H2 Ohio Funds from ODNR, where like we are working, we are doing projects that help remove a lot of those nutrients. Now, this project doesn't do that per se, but yeah, it's something that we pay attention to and have in our radar. But a lot of it's a land management issue with, with agriculture.
Maybe to help answer that question, for the last six, maybe even longer years, the organization I belong to, 350 Hinkley, has been monitoring three sites of inflow into the lake. Johnson's Run, East Branch, the Rocky River and Mirror Valley.
Yeah.
For nitrates and phosphates. In fact, we just did it this morning.
Excellent. And Mirror Valley is, Mirror Valley is an awesome story. Like what, what we have been able to accomplish there with the brown trout coming back and, yeah.
Right. And, and the nitrate and phosphate levels of, of those rivers and streams running in are relatively low.
It's good.
It's good. We saw more salt this morning, you know, and more dissolved solids. But the nitrates and phosphates from last year have already rinsed through the system.
Wow.
Anything else, Mel?
I don't want to take it away from you. You're adding so much. We'll just get, share. I, um, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your points. And honestly, that's not even something I had thought about with the, the roads and, you know, how heavy that equipment would be on our roads, especially our Bellis Road that we just redid. Um, that, that being said, I'm also hearing that it's 100 years old. And when it fails, because it's not a question of if, it's a question of when it will fail. There could, could be loss of life, but without a doubt, property loss. That that could be devastating to the people impacted by that because that is more of the lowland over there. And we already hear from residents that, you know, with really heavy rains, the creek starts to overflow and their properties are flooding. So to me, I would say the risk is worth it. It's, it's greater, well, but it was your point, so that's why I'm looking at you. You're sitting on the stand. I haven't sworn you in. I, I think that it's a valid point, but I just, I'm looking at, you know, the pros and the cons and weighing the options. And I would be much more in support of supporting the project than the possible negative impacts.
Sometimes what happens with construction projects like this is the roads are evaluated before it begins. Then they're evaluated afterwards. And any damage is taken on by who did most of the damage. Is that something you would want to ask?
Well, when time comes for the project, I'm sure that we would, you, you would have to provide what your haul routes are. Something that affect and we would request that that be addressed at that time.
Absolutely.
And I agree wholeheartedly, you know, truck traffic notwithstanding that the risk factor is too high to, if we have an opportunity to support something, though, get that taken care of.
Hundred years old, she's lasted a long time without a face left, so.
She has. She's gotten one or two every time.
Okay.
Nothing, yeah, right, right.
Not the full, the mommy makeover.
Just to touch a botox here.
Good. And then, did you say, did I miss it? Um, how long it will take from the time you drain it?
Our goal, so we will start draining September 18th of this year. Our goal is to have it back up and running sometime in the summer 2026 season.
Twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six, correct.
Oh, wow.
So we're going to, we're going to drain through the fall of 23. And, and then you're really going to see a lot of work in, it's actually not a bad time to pour mass concrete in the winter. Because the heat hydration and just how much concrete we're talking about. So that work will likely take place in the winter. And then we really, like I was saying about allowing the lake to decant, like we really want to dry this lake out before we, before we dredge. Because we will lose machinery if we put it in soup.
So there will be no swimming at Hinkley Lake for a minimum of two summers.
Two summers, yes.
Get it in while you can.
Get it in this year. Ledge, Ledge Pool is open.
Bad time to be in the pizza business, you might say. Nobody come in there to swim like they do in the late spring, summer. There's a, there's a lot of people, you know, a lot of people. Not anywhere right.
I bring my kids.
Yeah, I was just saying, I do too.
It's a big time favorite spot.
Yes.
It's got to be missed for a couple of years, I'm sure.
We, we know that there's some temporary pain, but again, it is just temporary and it's worth, as I think you were saying, I mean, this is a big deal. We, we, we need to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So you're going to build a new dam in front of the old dam, first starting with the big, heavy base to keep it from tilting.
Correct.
And then you're going to bring it up to the same height as the existing and use the same pool height.
Yes, so the, the spill, the concrete spillway will be reconstructed to today's existing height. The earthen embankment dams that flank it on each side will be raised. So that's where we get the extra storage so that, you know, when and if we ever get that PMF probable maximum flood, that it can all be contained within the lake. I mean, there's still, when that day happens and all heck will break loose because it's not just the lake. It's, it's every stream ditch, and there's a reason they call it maximum.
And so the trustees caught the subtle difference between spillway and earthen embankment.
So I'll show you.
Raise the earthen embankment.
Today?
Right.
This is the spillway. This is the concrete spillway. So this will be reconstructed at its existing height. It'll be wider because it needs to be heavier to resist that turning moment. But the embankment here will be raised. Which, today you can't see the light from the parking lot anyways. It's not really going to visually make any differences.
Will you use dredgings to do that?
No, we will actually use the clay from buzzards for this because the dredgings are permeable, the clay is impermeable.
Okay.
Impermeable.
And how far back do you have to carry those berms to capture overflow?
So with raising the cap, we're going to carry the berms back probably about 15 feet further from what they are today. But that's all, we don't have to lose any parking. I will say, and I apologize for not mentioning this earlier, because you may get a call or two. We will be removing trees from the embankment before March 31st of this year. So literally in the next two weeks. Reason being, we want to make sure that those trees come down before any federal restrictions get put in place, which start April 1st regarding the Indiana long-eared bat and other endangered species. So you'll see a little bit of work out there. You'll see a haul road be installed and then nothing for the balance of the spring and summer.
I'm sure that one other question that you'll get, I don't know if it's been addressed, is what about, what's the impact on wildlife with the draining?
That question is probably the one that comes up the most. We are lucky enough to have an incredible natural resource and aquatic biologist team with the, on staff here at the Metro Parks. And so two things. One is we do fish relocation often, and we have the equipment to do it, typically with an electroshock process. And then secondly, so we will be doing it here. Secondly, there are some freshwater mussels that have been encountered in the south part of the lake. So we will be working with a team to have the freshwater mussels relocated to other points in the watershed. So.
What about, we have kind of a larger population of beavers, don't we? At the lake?
Um, yeah. Yeah, we don't talk about beavers, you know, they're not, they're not a friend.
Why can't they rebuild?
They would if you gave them the chance. Yes. They will most likely, let's say that they're pretty good at being transient, they will relocate themselves.
And then someone's backyard.
Then what, once it's completed, what about repopulation?
So then we will restock. So we, we will have a restocking program with aquatic patches.
Stock the fish and the mussels.
Would you talk about refilling the pool when it is considered done and timed to refill?
Yes, and I will say, and this may sound odd, it will probably refill in just a matter of a few storms. Because we're on the main, not main branch, but the east branch of the Rocky River, we have learned a lot in the past six months with trying to temporarily de-water the lake just four feet. We would lose a week and a half's worth of progress with a one inch rain, okay? Or even a half inch rain. So now it may be very muddy when the lake first refills. But I, I would venture it is only going to be a matter of like short months or weeks to see the lake refill if we get, you know, a good storm here or there.
And the stream above the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You don't know, I need you to come up to the microphone, please, Martha, I could not hear you.
Tim Larson, 20 Car Road. This is my last question. The earth that you spoke about that you're going to reline the dam with, coming from Buzzard's Roost, is that going to come from the driving range or land behind it? Or what, what is the geography that all that earth is going to be coming from?
Where, where we have designated the borrow area is on, I would say, and we don't have an aerial to look at right now. If you look at an aerial, you'll see that there's a very defined meadow, a very strict tree line. Yes.
Where they celebrated the, the buzzards returning.
Western State. It's fine. It's fine.
Did you think they were going down here?
There would be a number of residents who'd be overjoyed to see you dig up that driving range.
Oh. We're not doing that.
We're, we're not talking about that, just like.
Yeah, thank you.
So what measures would you take during the process and after refilling to prevent silt from going further down the east branch of the Rocky River that is not as pristine after the lake as it is above the lake? I don't want to blame it on swimmers, but I'm not sure what to blame it on. But how would you rate, how would you hold back this silt?
So we're doing two things. First and foremost is what we're doing right now in Johnson's Creek. We have nearly finished a restoration project in Johnson's Creek that really reduces the amount of head cutting that we're seeing in Johnson's Creek. And that head cutting is an absolute straight rhyme relationship to the amount of sediment getting into the lake. So we've created, I don't want to call them armored, because we use a natural stream design. But if you get a chance to go to Johnson's, I'm going to be going there after this meeting. We've, we've used design methods to help naturally restore alignment in also the, the embankments, so we're not seeing that whole erosion issue and all the load of sediment. Secondly, when we dredge, we're actually going to be creating, so you, you can see here how, you can even see from the aerials that, that the silt that is deposited here. We are going to be building a four bay in this area. So what that means is we're actually going to be digging out a larger area than, correct. So then, once we get that inflow from the east branch, it gives it a chance to drop out and sell out, so that in fifteen years or twenty years, when we draw the lake down again, we can go back to the four bay and dredge the four bay and hopefully not have to dredge the entire lake. So that, that's the plan.
What, what about below the lake, below the dam?
We don't have any plans to do anything below the dam.
But what about the silt?
In terms of. Are you talking?
Silk flow into the east branch of the Rocky River.
We will, we will allow the silt to go through its natural deposition process and transport process during, during construction through, through the east branch. Which is something that we've talked to the Army Corps about, to the EPA about, and that is just a part of the process and would be happening any, anyways if the dam were not there. So.
Any comment on orders from when you start the dredging?
That's a good question. I will say that there may be a day or two, but what we've learned at Garfield Pond, what we've learned at Strawberry Pond is that it might smell like mud for a little bit. But because we don't have high phosphorus levels, because, you know, we haven't seen a lot of chemical deposits here, it's not something that we're really concerned about. So. You know what? There's always a good story hidden somewhere. If we find a car or a bowling ball or something. We could find a dinosaur. Yeah, yeah.
If it's a Garcia on a carbon fiber rod, that's mine.
Okay, okay, got it. And, and that big fish is attached to it, right? The one that got away? No, okay.
Would you care to make the motion?
Just accept a, a motion agreeing to the letter?
Well, move to sign a letter of support for the Metro Parks Dam renovation project to be sent to Sherrod Brown. Supporting the project that will commence in twenty twenty-three with completion in twenty twenty-five?
Six.
Twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second in by Ash Roll. All in favor? Thank you so much, folks. Do you?
If, if we could, your, your motion specifically suggested only the letter for Congressman Brown, sorry, Senator Brown. And we, we do have a second.
I'm going to send that letter to Congress, Congressman Max Miller's office as well. Just want to clarify that.
No, we only have, we have the one.
I can send that same letter.
Same one?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine.
This one?
Yeah.
To him as well?
We just want to be clear that the congressman and the senator will both be receiving the letter.
I'm on motion to include Congressman Miller.
We can do a separate one for him if you'd like, or we can just send that exact one to both offices.
It's your choice.
Okay.
You want to amend it? And I'll second it, since you made the motion that I seconded.
Okay, amend, amend the motion to include the, sending the same letter to Congressman Miller, Max Miller's office.
Second, as amended.
Second as amended. All in favor?
All right, so we'll sign yours and then put it Melissa's box so she can sign.
I printed out another one with today's date on it.
And then is it okay if she scans it back to me or the administrative assistant scans it back to me?
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for the big diagram.
Mine?
Yes.
T R O L I O. Nice Italian.
R O L I O.
You got it right. Oh, T, is that a T? That's, it's supposed to be a T. He has in Tom.
That was my maiden name. Now, just German.
Everybody's Irish tomorrow.
Right? And then in a month or so, Mexican? And then we can all be American on the fourth.
Well, thank you so much. If you have other questions, I, you probably have my email now through the, through the email chain, happy to answer.
Was it forwarded? I thought it came I'll have to, I'm sure we'll get it. Yeah.
And again, we'll keep you posted if we're successful with the funding or not.
Right. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
No, thank you for making the time.
Mr. Pearl, great notes.
What he's now for.
He said it approximately two twenty-four in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to trustees' corner.
Yes. You gotta be by a microphone, or else Martha's going to be texting me saying, I can't hear who's talking. Okay, I sent you and Melissa yesterday a drafted option of what I thought we could submit for the trustees' corner for the month of April. The deadline was yesterday, but I did email script type and asked them if they would be willing to extend the deadline by a day for us, and they said, yes, they were. So I sent you both that email and said we could discuss it today. I just wanted you to have it in advance. So if there were any edits that you recommended, it would save time. If you had it ahead of time.
I did look at it, and it's just a simple reiteration of what was already read into the record. So it, it's already a public document. So I would have no objection if you wanted to submit that.
Okay. The only thing that I changed on this after I sent it to you was the final line where it says the township has hired outside legal refer, outside legal counsel as repres, representation. I can't remember exactly what it said. I changed it to the township has hired outside legal counsel who is an expert on township and annexation law as per his resume and his website. Objections to that?
I mean, I think it's okay as is, just, just so that they know that we have legal counsel.
Okay. I just thought it would be appropriate to list that this was his specialty, but that's fine.
Okay.
Just legal counsel?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just, I, I wanted to add that in there because of the statement that Melissa made at the last meeting saying she didn't have, I'm going to paraphrase because I do not remember her exact wording, but basically she didn't have any confidence in our attorney. So that was why I thought it would be nice to reiterate that he is an expert on township law and annexation law.
Well, if they're listening in here, they'll capture it from here. As far as.
Leave it the original?
Yeah, leave it the original. And if they want any additional information, I'm sure we can provide it from his office.
Okay. How does that last sentence read after legal counsel? Because I did not save the.
For representation on this.
Outside legal counsel for representation on this matter. And it's two hundred and ninety-four words. We are under the three hundred-word max. And I will send this off to them now if we are in agreement.
We are in agreement.
Fantastic.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
There's nothing else on our agenda, so.
You find.
Trustees.
Trustees. It will keep, it will keep the S as it has always had.
All the trustees will be in agreement.
Yes. That it would be, yes.
What we agreed is that the board would agree.
It would be the voice of the board, so that it would not be.
And as I said, if this was something outside of the scope of something that wasn't already in a meeting, I, I would hold it in advance. But because this is already a matter of public record, it's inserted in the meetings minutes from the last meeting that I have no issue with putting this out.
For your information, the trustees' corner that I'm submitting is strict, it's Jack's timeline of the annexation. The, the CRA request all the way through the annexation petition that he read at the last meeting, which I'm sure you saw. So it's strictly the facts that he, that timeline that he had put out. And then I just added in two sentences that we received so many questions about it at the front of it, and then the body of it. And then the last two sentences are just that Medina County Commissioners are going to hold a public hearing on April eleventh at ten thirty AM, and that we hired outside legal counsel.
And both of those pieces were discussed in the meeting as well, so.
Okay.
All right. With nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn at four forty-seven PM.
Second.
Second of my ash roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.